It is six o'clock and we're going to begin our regularly scheduled meeting of Town Council. You have your agenda package in front of you. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, can I motion to approve the agenda? Deputy Mayor Tanner. Second Council Fergier. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor? All right. Are any announcements for any upcoming events that anyone wants to speak about?
This is not an upcoming event, it's a completed event, but I certainly had a chance to take part in the relief relief this year, the ninth year. And although there was only 11 teams there, they raised a profit of $31,400, which is commendable for that small number of teams. The teams are dropping down each year, but the spirit's there. We had close to 90 survivors walk the first lap and $31,400 cancer research.
Wow, that's great. Thank you for that. Councilor Donald.
Just wanted to mention on June 30th, the opening, the official opening of Pidginewisika Park will begin at four o'clock. There will be some speeches from officials as well as some entertainment and activities. There will also be a rain art project that will be unveiled that day and some other great things to take in. So please join us at the park. I'd also like to just take a moment to mention that 36 companies and organizations have stepped up to sponsor Canada Day on the La Havre this year. They've allowed us to plan a really exciting event to celebrate the 150th celebrations. Picnic Studio is doing some work for us right now and they're doing some really great videos to highlight our major sponsors. So keep an eye on the Facebook page and on Twitter for the event details and for those videos. And please share them to spread the word about the companies and organizations that are supporting our local events.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? I'll just quickly mention that Council Fergier and I were at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Annual Conference last week in Ottawa and brought back quite a bit of information relevant to our town that we can put in place. And so we're going to put together a report that we'll present to council. So in the next few weeks, we'll have something that we'll hand out. Maybe we'll actually present from the podium with some information on the screen. But it was a great conference, the biggest one they'd ever had as well, so it's great. Anyone else? I'll apologize right now, I'm feeling under the weather, so if I start coughing and sneezing, I may have to, I won't lean your way, Sandra, but I'll. That means you. Yeah, man. So I apologize. We have two delegations here. The first one is from St. Vincent de Paul, Patricia Mount. I see that you're here and so, welcome. Thank you for coming in.
The first is a surprise, neither one of us are Patricia Mount.
Oh, okay.
And I'm Maura McDonald.
And I'm Patricia Smith.
And we are both consensians. So what we'd like to do is give you a little presentation about who St. Vincent de Paul is and the work that we do in our community. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So as you can see from the slide, we're an international organization, a registered charity. The two parishes that host St. Vincent de Paul in this area are St. Joseph's in Bridgewater and St. Harbertson-Lunenburg. We've been operating in Lunenburg County for 29 years. But now you want to know why we're here. Number one, we're here because we've recently submitted an application for funding and for storage, additional storage. And a keen emphasis on storage because storage is a big part of our program, which you will hear the reason why very shortly. And when we looked at the mission of the town of Bridgewater, it's to serve the people of Bridgewater to strive to meet their social, economic, and health needs through direct service offerings and an effective partnership. And we want to be your partners in helping the people within Bridgewater who need this help. We want to take a few minutes to demonstrate the level of need that currently exists in Bridgewater of those individuals who live here who are easy to overlook. So those who are impoverished, the working poor, and we'll cover that as well. The town of Bridgewater includes all residents, the well-off as well as the poor. They're all part of the community that you serve. We are asking you to help us to help them. Let's see if this really works. Our mission is quite simple. It's to serve the poor with love, respect, justice, and charity. We have 26 volunteers and they're from all parts of the county. Many have been with St. Vincent de Paul for more than 20 years. Our volunteers are from the entire community, not just the faith community. So we serve without prejudice, we serve from the heart. Anyone in genuine need, no religious affiliation required. So we serve with positive spirit and hope. Who we serve? The number of requests for assistance per tracked by the number of calls we receive at our telephone line. The 20th, year 2016, requests for help 360. Portion from Bridgewater was 174, being 48 percent. Of that, the adults served was 504. Again, 180 from the Bridgewater area, making it 36 percent. Children served 365. Bridgewater area, 116, 32 percent. The total individual serves was 869. That's in 2016. Our quarterly report for 2017 shows an increase in requests of 65 percent in comparison with the same time last year. So this is from January to June. Our neighbors in need. Our neighbors in need are the disabled. These are individuals who suffer from various conditions such as diabetes, severe arthritis, pain-related injuries, mobility issues, and mental health issues. These individuals need a greater commitment of our time and effort. Abuse situation. An example of a mother and children having to leave home with just the clothes on their backs. Financial assistance is needed for rent. We provide furniture, linens, household items to help them set up a brand-new household. Refugees and immigrants. A number of families have arrived in the area in the past year. They're in need of furniture, linens, and household items. We've even helped, given a helping hand when they have to move to a new address. Our working poor. These individuals usually have part-time jobs but do not qualify for government assistance. These are the ones that we feel are often forgotten. Unemployed individuals. Last year, returning from the oil fields, whose EI benefits have expired and have not found full-time employment. Our seniors on fixed income. These are individuals who have to make the choice between buying the prescriptions that they need or paying their rent or their power bill. Neighbors in need are those suffering from unexpected tragedy. Families who have lost everything in a fire. In most cases, they do not have insurance coverage for the contents. Last year, a number of individuals needed help because they were returning from the wildfires of Fort McMurray. They had nothing left. Ways we serve. Immediate financial assistance for. This assistance covers rent, power, oil, firewood, prescriptions, dental care, eye care, and food vouchers. Furniture and household items. We are the only organization that will pick up gently-used furniture, linens, and households. We receive donations from individuals downsizing, seniors moving to nursing homes, individuals who have experienced a death in the family and have to clear the apartment. We provide this service in our communion, sorry. We provide this service in our community. We are in need of storage space. The town of Bridgewater has provided temporary space to us in the past at the old Bridgewater Arena. We really appreciate and use this site. Without it, we would have to discontinue our service to those in need. We work with the individuals to support, help them support them to be self-sufficient. We help in budgeting, setting goals, suggesting a return to school, empowering individuals to have choices. We propose options, not opinions. Last fall, we received a request from a young mother who was enrolled at the local college in a legal program. She needed a table so that her school-aged child could sit and finish his homework while she worked on her own assignments. We delivered a table and chairs, but noticed that there was hardly any furniture in the flat. We returned with a love seat, coffee table, and table lamps and a dresser. The young woman was just overwhelmed and could not thank us enough for helping her make this part of her life journey a bit more manageable. Lately, we received a request for a double bed. We invited the individual to our storage at the arena to pick out what he needed. We made two trips. We provided a bed, a dresser, TV stand, and housewares. All in all, a great day for him and for us. We consult with our community organizations to fulfill requests outside our scope. In other words, we're working with the Salvation Army, other churches, and a number of service groups within the area. How we serve. Every request is carefully considered. We interview the individuals. We complete a standard form outlining income and expenses. We validate the request by asking authorization to contact third parties involved such as the social worker, the landlord, the low-income advocate with Nova Scotia Power. Funding is limited per family. We try to ensure that we are filling genuine needs. Benefactors. So how do we get the money that we have now to handle the requests? And as Patricia said, you know, we try to validate the requests to make sure that they're genuine, to make sure that the money is being spent wisely or provided wisely. So right now, we get the bulk of our donations from our own parishes, being St. Harbertson and St. Joseph's. The United Way is a huge contributor. We get funding from, small bits of funding, from other towns. We're just, we're Lunenburg County. So some from the towns, from the District of Lunenburg. Other churches and service organizations occasionally give us money, which is wonderful. And we have a bank that has a casual dress day and every Christmas they give us the money towards that. So that's wonderful. And it's really all of these organizations who see the work that we do. And what we do is we take the money from their hands and put it into the hands of the people who need it the most. We also have in-kind donations. The town of Bridgewater with our unheated storage, thank you again. O'Regan's offers us vehicles to help move furniture. Brown Storage gives us storage for free, again, unheated. And Sears gives us discounts on the cost of beds. I just want to stop for a second too and say that what we're looking for is heated storage as well because what people give us when they're, say their parents are moving into assisted living and they're downsizing and they want to give us some furniture, they want to give us some sofa and chairs and nice upholstered furniture. When that goes into unheated storage, it's susceptible to mold. But what we'd like to have is heated storage. Okay, how you can help? 48 percent of all requests come from Bridgewater. We're very proud of our low administrative costs. The only cost that we cover out of the funding is our cellphone and that's how our neighbors in need reach us. $2.75 for bank charges and a couple of stamps every now and again. So the vast majority of the money that we take in goes right into the hands of the people who need it. We need your help to either, as a council, to approve our funding or some funding for us, or to help us find storage. And I'll make a personal appeal too. If anybody would like to donate to St. Vincent de Paul, that would be wonderful. Or maybe if you have a personal connection that can help us to find heated storage, that would be wonderful too. Or if you know anybody who's very strong and able to move some furniture, we'd be more than happy to take that help too. You were elected to work for the citizens of Bridgewater, and that's all citizens. And we would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any councillors have any questions? Deputy Mayor. So how much heated storage are you looking for?
At the moment, we have three areas that we have for storage. One is for the linens, which is just a room at St. Joseph's Center. We have free storage at Brown's, which is a small storage area. We have shelving, and this is where we have all our household items such as kettles, toasters, dishes, pots and pans. This is the type of thing we have at that area. At the old arena at this point in time, which has made it possible for us to move a lot of furniture in the past year. We have approximately 400 square feet. And the cooperation of the gentlemen who work for Parks and Rec who are in and out and if they see the chaps loading or unloading the pickup trucks, they'll be there to help us out. And they'll let us know that in the fall, a lot more equipment from the city is moved into the old arena for storage. So to be honest, I couldn't tell you how much we've got there. I would say 400 square feet.
This is inside the old arena?
Inside the old arena. It's a great place to be in the summer when it's hot outside. It's dark, but it's what we've been able to accomplish with just that small space. People, we invite people to come in to choose the furniture. We don't just dish it out to them. We give them the choice. Can you use this? And we're doing our darndest to make sure that it is clean, it's not broken, it is highly usable. We always say that the first two weeks of the month, we do get calls, we pick up the furniture. If we can deliver it directly to somebody in need, we do that. If not, we bring it in to the arena. And by the third week of the month, we're all getting panicky because we've got stuff starting to be stacked, one on top of the other. And by the first, the last day of the month and the first of the month, the pickup trucks come in and we clear so much out. So, yeah. Anything more would be wonderful.
Okay, any other?
Just one. You are aware that the town did give a grant of $1,500 to your organization?
Three years ago, yes.
I thought we did, wasn't this year, but I could be wrong. Or it hasn't come to council yet. It's been recommended.
We were going to take credit for that. That's good to know.
Is that what you were going to add?
And whatever funds, again, we're considering a store, but that costs you rent. So any additional funds could be towards finding a location where we could pay a minimal rent. But thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next delegation is Mersey Tobiatic Research Institute. And welcome. Good evening.
I also have some slides for you. Great, so my name is Amanda Leavers. You probably want me to stand here. I work at the Mersey Tobiatic Research Institute and I'm pleased to be here tonight for many of the same reasons that the previous delegation stated. I work with a charity and we'd really like to forge our relationship with the town of Bridgewater, help to make better connections and make you more aware about the work we're doing and perhaps spur some ideas about how we could work more closely in the future. So I'll just start off in a similar kind of a way and describe for you the mission of our organization. It's to promote the sustainable use of natural resources. So we're moving sort of a little bit away from social justice, but to something that's very related and about how we interact with our natural world. So part of our mission is to do, to promote the sustainable use of natural resources and also biodiversity conservation. We do that primarily in southwestern Nova Scotia, but we also work throughout the Maritimes and in some cases around the world. We do it in three ways, through research, education, and the operation of a field station. And I'll speak to each of those as we go through the slides. We have a vision. We have about 800 members and 50 different partner companies or agencies who have contributed to this vision. This is what we would imagine the world to be like if we accomplish our mission, that there will be prosperous and knowledgeable human communities where decisions that have any kind of biodiversity implication would be well-informed by research, where there wouldn't be any species at risk, where there would be landscape and aquatic connectivity, healthy forests, and healthy aquatic ecosystems. I'm going to speak to what many municipal councils want to hear about first, and that's the sort of business end of things. Our organization was incorporated in 2004 when we became a charity. We started from scratch and we've grown quite steadily over the last 13 years. We have 12 year-round staff and we add a complement of five to 10. This summer it is 10 students per year. We attract about a half a million dollars to the rural community where our field station is. It's not in the town of Bridgewater, but very nearby. We're about halfway between Kedumukukjuk National Park and the village of Caledonia. We attract a lot of scientists. We enrich the lives of not just the residents of North Queen's, but many of our volunteers who are from the Bridgewater area. And we have been fostering a number of other businesses and cooperatives. Particularly in the last few years, we have a very engaged volunteer base which stretches right back to our beginning. As a sort of scientific-minded folk, we like to count things as we go along. We've been very careful to track the amount of volunteer effort that's been put into our collective work. And with Parks Canada, Bird Studies Canada, and our organization, we log over 10,000 volunteer hours a year. Last year, it was more in the 13,000 to 14,000 hour range. So we have a lot of energy and enthusiasm, like the previous delegation. People, you know, can be very passionate about the things that they're working on and hope to pass along some of this passion to you during this presentation. So there are what we consider three pillars of MTRI and I'll speak to each of those very briefly because I only have a few minutes. Part of our work, it is very place-based. We couldn't exist in Halifax or in any other part of the world. It's important to us that we're here in southwestern Nova Scotia. We have a facility, our main building, it used to be Bowater Mersey's Field Office. We renovated it and used it as a kind of a field station to attract people to do research and also to learn about research that's being done in the area. There's a picture there of one of your staffers with one of my staffers. So Leon and Amy were part of the Living Energy Lab and MTRI's project, which was to monitor our five green technologies at our field station, was awarded the People's Choice Award this winter. And that sort of sparked the whole plans for me coming in to speak to you at council. So we want to walk the talk. And when it comes to climate change, for example, we use our facility as a way of demonstrating how residential-scale building can reduce its carbon footprint. So if you look at the top of the graph on this slide, you can see how our power consumption increased just after we were incorporated because we were a business that was growing. But we sort of took control of that situation. And while increasing our square footage by about 30 percent, we've managed to decrease our power consumption by over 50 percent. You can see some pictures there that show some of our green technologies, which include solar panels, some geothermal heating tubes, a wind turbine, a cancel air. And our sort of badge, our achievement after many of our renovations is that we were awarded Gold Lead for Homes after our renovations, which were around 2011. So the second pillar of our work is about our education and outreach. We do this in quite a number of ways. We do it right on-site, but also through mass media, through events, workshops, seminars, as well as a number of publications. Not just scientific kinds of publications, but we're really interested in how to make the work that we do accessible to the public. So we have a number of little booklets, things that we're doing on social media or on the internet to get the word out. But the third pillar of our work is what's right in the middle of our name. It's what most people expect to hear about at presentations like this. So I will tell you about our research and monitoring program. It too has three major themes and I'll speak to each of these one at a time. And I'll just give you a little bit of an update or some projects that are sort of relevant to Bridgewater as we go along. And then hopefully we'll have time for some questions. So we work on species at risk, endangered species. Quite a number of different ones, including bats, lichens, small plants, chimney swifts, monarch butterflies, blanding turtles, eastern ribbon snakes, all species that are shown in pictures there. We actually run about 20 different projects over the course of any given year. Some of them last all year round, some of them are more short-lived. For example, with our chimney swift project, we're quite interested, there's a picture here of a chimney swift. And just here is one of the only chimneys around, near the south shore where chimney swifts roost. It happens to be near Caledonia. But we know from bird watchers in the Bridgewater area that there are chimney swifts that nest in this area. So this summer, part of our plan is to have summer students actually working, excuse me, with bird watchers right in the town to try to identify where there may be chimneys that are being used actively by chimney swifts. We also do a lot of work to propagate, the only kind of plant that monarch butterflies will lay their eggs on in that swamp, either the common milkweed or the swamp milkweed. We prefer to promote the native swamp milkweed. And we're hoping to work with the town of Bridgewater and some of your public gardening spaces to plant more of these kind of plants for the monarch butterfly. Last year, we had quite a banner year with a number of discoveries you might have seen in the news. We found some bat maternity colonies and also some new populations of blanding turtles. So another theme of research for us is aquatic health. This means water quality, which is sort of obvious, but also a number of other things. We're really interested in fish passage. We work with the Blue Nose Coastal Action Foundation. For example, on a number of these projects, we also work closely with the Canadian Wildlife Federation down here. In the bottom corner, there's a picture of some of our biologists who are, have captured loons and are studying their blood mercury. We're trying to discourage people from introducing invasive fish into our waterways and also trying to look at how different pollutants might affect habitat for a number of species. One project I thought might be worth mentioning tonight is a project that was inspired by, we call them the Greggs, and they were featured last fall on a Land and Sea episode. Greg Turner and Greg McNally, you may know from Fancy Lake, who designed a loon nesting platform, an artificial platform for loons, which we've replicated all across southwestern Nova Scotia now. This, just in the last couple of months, we've installed 20 different loon nesting platforms using their design. And we're hoping to see loons using them and increasing their reproductive success, which we've been monitoring for several decades and it's extremely low compared to the rest of North America. So the third research theme that our organization spends a lot of time on has a number of projects to look at is about forest health and landscape connectivity. This includes projects about wildlife like flying squirrels. Also disturbance factors like wildfire or prescribed burns. We work with private landowners quite a bit. And I'll speak about some of these projects. They have a bit more of an economic spin, so they may be of interest to your council. They have a bit more of an economic spin, so they may be of interest to your council. Last year in particular, we had quite a focus on women in forestry. We've developed kind of a critical mass of professional women working in forestry together here in western Nova Scotia. And so we've been leading a number of projects. Some that focus on old forests, not necessarily gender-specific, but we also run a certification program with the Federation of Wood Law Owners, which covers quite a land base now. And we're merging with a group in Cape Breton. And there's also this project where we've begun, and this was led by several women, researching the economics of different forestry practices. So partial harvesting in particular is a project that we took an in-depth look at over the last year. I've zoomed through and kind of given you an overview of some of the things we're working on. And I wanted to end with this slide to sort of touch on a project that we've just begun working on with your staff and with your support. And that is researching sustainable forestry-based biomass, what the supply and what the cost could be for the town of Bridgewater. So we've conducted 12 expert interviews and we have a final report that's in progress. We've already begun to feed some data to consultants who are working on the Community Energy Investment Plan. I think Leon is going to describe this further in your agenda tonight. So we've particularly looked at what could be the cost of sustainably sourced, low-grade wood products and whether or not there's sufficient supply. And we are planning in partnership with some local companies, including one you may have heard of called Woods Camp. It's a startup, a sort of tech-based company based out of Mahone Bay. A demonstration tour. And we'd really like to invite your staff and if there's sufficient interest, perhaps a counselor or two, to join us on a trip to Summerside PEI, where we'll be touring some of the hospitals and schools there where they've been supporting sustainably harvested wood, excuse me, operations through their municipal and, in their case, provincial buildings. Should have brought myself a little glass of water. Went through that rather fast. If there's time, I'll take questions.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from members of council? No? Yes? When's this report going to be available, do you think, timeline?
I think within the next couple of months.
Okay, alright. And do we, do we have a fair amount of biomass available to us within a short transport distance?
That map actually shows privately-held woodland, I should say. So in this mapping exercise, which is part of our analysis, that shows that that first circle is centered on the town of Bridgewater. And the darker green is where there are private woodlands. So Bridgewater is as well-positioned as any other town in southwestern Nova Scotia. If you went up towards perhaps New Minus, you might catch as much in a 25-kilometer radius. But those are 25-kilometer radii. And so we've been analyzing those to look at supply. And part of what we've been discovering through our interviews is one of the best ways to pay for good restorative forestry is to be able to provide the markets for the low-grade wood, which as you probably know, is something that's disappeared from this part of the province. A lot of that kind of wood's been trucked up to northern pulp. But the economics of that are questionable.
Sure.
As are the environmental aspects.
That's good. Any other questions? No? Great, thank you very much.
So I have an ask.
Okay.
Well, I had two asks. And they aren't specifically attached to dollars. I'm sure you get that all the time. We'd like to formalize our relationship with council. And so we'd like to invite you to become a partner of the Mersey Tobiotic Research Institute. And if there's a contact person, then I can correspond with that once you make your decision about whether you'd like to do that or not. Maybe that will take a further correspondence or another meeting. There's no cost involved, but it does mean that, you know, we have something in common. MTRI is already a partner of Energize Bridgewater, but we're just wondering whether we can reciprocate that. And then we'd also like specifically to ask about whether there's someone who would come on this tour to PEI, which would not involve any costs either.
So generally what we do is we don't deal with requests the same day we have a delegation, so it would come back to a future meeting for discussion.
Right. So you'll let me know who I should provide the information or for that to happen?
Yeah, I would say probably to...
Sandra?
Yes.
Okay, super.
Sandra. Yeah, so I would formally request it in writing and then it will be added to a future agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next item are the minutes from May 8th and 22nd, 2017. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Most.
Council McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Down to planning. Preliminary report for the proposed development agreement of multi-unit residential development at 654 Glen Allen Drive. So this is, this is coming quickly to us.
Thank you. So this is the very first step in the process for a development agreement. So we've had an application made for Mahone Bay, which is a land development company that's been doing some development work on the south shore. They have a proposal to build a 44-unit residential dwelling on Glen Allen Drive. So this is Glen Allen Drive here and this is La Haye Street, just to give you some context. This is the old Kirk Forestry property. The entire property is 15 acres and they're proposing to subdivide approximately 1.5-acre parcel adjacent to Glen Allen Drive and the Centennial Trail for the construction of a 44-unit apartment building. So just to give you an idea of the location, this is kind of an area of town that we've had a lot of conversation about lately. As you probably well know, it's in a primarily low-density residential neighborhood. There's an existing high-density residential development, which is Drumland Hills, which is back here. It's adjacent to the Bridgewater Baptist Church. And there are some industrial uses in the neighborhood as well, down here on the riverfront. And this is the town's wastewater treatment plant over here behind the property. It's also close to HB Studios and Generations Active Park in this area and across the street from the La Haye Athletic Fields and a five-minute bike ride or a 15-minute walk to the Bridgewater Mall. So just to get into the zoning a little bit, it's zoned comprehensive residential, which is pretty flexible zoning. You could do one or two units as a right and then by site plan approval or development agreement. You can do larger residential developments or you could do some smaller-scale commercial or some office uses as well. So for their residential development, they could do up to 25 units per acre or 62 units per hectare by development agreement. So this property would also qualify for our density bonus. So they could have a few extra units if they allocated some of those units for affordable housing. So a detailed site plan will be coming. This is very preliminary. They wanted to get the process moving. So we've asked that a site plan be provided before the public participation meeting. This is the entire parcel here and this is Glen Allen Drive and La Haye Street. So this is the front portion that we're talking about here. And here's an elevation drawing that kind of shows what the building might look like. But this will be developed further through our development agreement process. So we'll provide some analysis, of course, after we receive comments from the public, from the town engineer and traffic authority, and from the development officer. This is the very first step that we're going through here tonight. The next step would be a public participation meeting and then we'll get into that fine-tuned analysis at the third step and a draft development agreement later on in the summer. So what we're asking for tonight is for council to agree to schedule the public participation meeting for July 5th at 6:00 PM in council chambers and to direct staff to undertake the required notifications.
Thank you.
I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from councillors?
Put a question slide up.
Council Thorburn.
It's a large parcel of land and I didn't see on there where there must be going to be a road through there. And we'll need...
Yeah, absolutely. So it is a very large parcel and we'll be going through a subdivision process. So the plan right now, so keep in mind that this is all to be discussed. The plan right now is to develop sort of the left part here on this end for three different multi-unit residential buildings. So those would all come back to council as separate applications for development agreements. So we don't need to worry about that at this point. And then this other, this to the right here would be subdivided as well and would be more four-unit townhouses. And then a public street would need to come. And we really don't know how that would be configured because it's quite tight here to have, so there would need to be two access points here for the residential building, the multi-unit residential buildings. And then to have a public street come through here and they're not allowed to have a cul-de-sac. So we're still trying to figure out what that might look like.
Okay.
But yeah, that's the plan. It would be, eventually the entire site would be developed primarily for higher density, but some lower-density residential uses as well.
So not allowed to have a cul-de-sac? Just because we don't allow that anymore or...
So that's a provision of the subdivision bylaw. So I think to clarify, you couldn't have a cul-de-sac that didn't include a right-of-way that the town or another developer could come along and extend it and connect it to an existing street. So they don't necessarily have to build it all the way to the connection, but they have to provide, they have to leave the street right-of-way to allow the street to be built in the future.
Could that connect to the street that feeds our wastewater treatment plant that goes up in there on the back end of that? If it went in one way, could it join that and come down as an alternate route?
I'm not sure if that's a public street.
I think it's just a driveway. Because I think there's a gate at the end of it, isn't it?
Yeah, we have a gate. But I mean, it could maybe be changed to a...
Yeah, and I think there's a right-of-way that comes along the bottom of the property as well. So there's lots of options. So I don't think anybody's thinking that we can't work it out. It's just what it might look like, that's still up in the air.
Okay.
So a multi-phase project with phases within phases almost, right? Because the buildings are part of phase one.
Yeah, we could describe it as phase one. So we're trying to, number one, trying to get them going on this development. They would really like to get the development agreement finished this year. So that's kind of why we're coming at such an early stage, because they're really only thinking about that front parcel right now. But also, I mean, it's really challenging with a parcel this big and again with the subdivision and how difficult it is to envision that to really describe in any detail what the phasing might look like. Because, I mean, I think you've probably noticed with some developments in the past, you get through phase one and then you realize, okay, maybe that's not working out as they expected and they want to change to phase two. And then they have to come back to do a whole different development agreement anyway, so why not just deal with phase one at the beginning and kind of do a step-by-step? So that's kind of the two reasons why we're approaching council at this point, to get things moving.
Just to add, if I could, they will be working through developing a concept plan of subdivision as well.
Okay.
So that will lay out sort of the lot allocation and sort of what they're envisioning with that. So, and that's when you have a phased project. So they'll be working through that as well.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
What's the R3 in behind? Is that part of the 15 as well?
Pardon me, is that part of what?
The 15 acres.
No. So it's just this parcel right here is the 15 acres.
So how would you ever access that piece behind?
Yeah, I think that was the justification for leaving the street right-of-way here. So then you could, yeah, it's a little bit hard to see, but there is a possibility to build a public street to get back there.
In between that development and their wastewater site, I'm looking at a satellite, I guess.
Again, as Jamie Ellen said, it's pretty premature at this point. And part of that will be worked through with the concept plan. So some of the preliminary discussions that Nick has been having with the developer around the plan of subdivision, where they might have just been looking at the single parcel thinking we could do a loop public road, saying how about a road up with a street right-of-way that would enable future access to that parcel in behind? So those sorts of things are being discussed. And so there'll be more details coming.
Out of curiosity, how large is that parcel in behind?
I couldn't say.
No?
No.
Do we own it, town-owned?
No, it's privately owned.
Okay.
That does kind of speak to your point though, Mayor Mitchell. And if we had permitted cul-de-sacs here, it might make it more challenging to develop that site in behind. But if we require them to leave some room to build a public street in the future, then presumably that would be easier to develop.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any further questions? Someone prepared to make a motion, please? Council Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater schedule a public participation meeting for Wednesday, July 5th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at the town hall regarding a proposed development at 654 Glen Allen Drive for a multi-unit residential development and direct staff to undertake the required notification to the public participation meeting.
I have a secondary, please. Council McDonald, any further debate? Questions? Question, ready for the question? No, no one wants to call for a question?
Call a question.
Thank you. Question's a big call. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. We have no correspondence for information. Correspondence for action. We have a letter from the Chair and members of the Bridgewater Museum Commission regarding seasonal operation. There's a motion in your package. If someone's prepared to make that motion.
Yes, Your Worship. I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater refer the letter from the Bridgewater Museum Commission, document 17-039Q, to the town solicitor for review.
Have a secondary and then we can discuss it. Council McDonald. Any discussion on that?
None that would be constructive at this point in time.
Just for the, for the general public, we've received a letter that is officially requesting that Bridgewater Town Council rescind its motion and then lists a number of items in the legislation that leads them to believe that we can't have done what we did. So that's why it's being referred to legal. Any other comment on that? Hearing none? Oh, Council Thorburn?
I was at the commission meeting, but when they got into this, I just left the room because I didn't want a conflict of interest. And I didn't, I didn't see this letter until I come here tonight. And I just wanted to make that point clear that when they started going into this, I asked to be excused and left immediately.
Okay, thank you. Ready for the question?
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Next item is Bridgewater Junior High School, Bridgewater Junior Senior High School School Advisory Committee request for funding. As the public knows, our senior high is effectively being closed and the kids are moving to Parkview. And so there's a number of events that the SAC has planned. They've had a couple already, I believe, or one at least. And so they have requested $2,000 from Bridgewater Town Council. And that has come for us for discussion. And debate. So if someone wants to, we can start with putting a motion on the floor or I'll actually allow if people just want to have the discussion first. But we have to talk about something. So we've received some information, some financials. I know there were some questions looking for more detailed financials, which we had not received to this point.
Yeah, so for me, $10,000 seems like a lot of money. A $2,000 ask seems like a fair amount of money. Not that I don't want to support the achievement awards and so on. And I guess, does the $2,000 also cover the fund day they had the week prior? Or do we know that?
I think part of the issue is that we don't know that.
Okay. Yeah, no.
Who was it? Council for you.
Am I allowed to ask is what, has council in the past received letters similar to this for requests from the school? Does anybody know?
Not that I can...
Okay.
Not since I've been here.
So again, the concern that we had, of course, is that we did, we did request, we did receive some information. And I know, Mr. Smith, you did request more detailed information because it's, when public money goes out, there needs to be, you know, a budget in place so we can see where public money is going. And we received a little bit back, but not the detail we were asking for. And I know you did ask for more. And I'm going to make the assumption that you didn't receive...
No, I haven't received anything.
You haven't received anything. Council McDonald.
I'm appointed to the SAC and we did have discussion about where money was coming and going. And I didn't want to speak on behalf of the Chair of the SAC. So I inquired about the minutes from the meeting, but I haven't received those either. So I don't have anything to add to it as far as more of a breakdown.
I would move that we defer this decision until we perhaps gather or get more detail on the budget details for this particular request.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. I think that's a wise decision personally. I think we've asked for information. We're obviously still waiting for it. We're obviously still waiting for it. Counselor McInnes, you have a pick.
I agree with the motion, but my question would be, is this a little bit time-sensitive? Because the last time, the last event is the end of the month, and we're now at the 12th. We have one more meeting this month. Is there a chance we can approve it at that meeting?
We could, yeah. We could add it to the agenda for the 26th. When I look at their letter, they're having an event on the 25th. Is that right? Is that a Sunday? They're having an event on the Sunday, a celebration day? So we'll miss some of it, but we won't miss all of it. So, but again, information was requested on more than one occasion, and we haven't received any. Counselor Thorburn.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Your Worship, and Andrew. If we're going to fund that, we have the right to know whether money's being spent and how much money is required. And we just got a statement of $10,000. It doesn't tell us anywhere that they're using that amount of money. And I think we have the right to expect that noise before we hand money over to somebody.
Counselor McDonald.
Further to Counselor McInnes's comments, the SAC has no further meetings this year. I think they had a kind of wind-up dinner in June, and that, that's it. So that, asking for additional information, some of it may be delayed because there are no further meetings. But again, I think that the minutes could probably clarify, or the information from the minutes, and an email could clarify what we're looking for.
Okay. Well, all we can do is, we can defer this to the next meeting. We can hope that the information comes in. If it's, if it's too late, then it's too late. And if it doesn't come, then that probably answers that. There is a motion, there's a mover and a secondary. Any further debate?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you for that. Reports and recommendations, Energize Bridgewater, progress update and endorsement of vision. And our sustainability planner, Leon DeBreed, is going to make a very short presentation, I understand.
Funny, you're like the third person who's told me that. Guess I'll have to do that then.
After it's been half an hour, we'll give you a presentation.
Okay, so good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Today I have for you a bit of an update on what this relatively large program is that's been going on on its own merry way for the past year or so. And I have with me our summer intern Craig Deedles, whom I'll introduce momentarily. So you have in front of you a staff report that details a lot of the behind-the-scenes activity that's been happening in our program. To keep it fairly basic, we've gone through, we've completed three of our six phases of the project. We're right now in phase four, Strategy and Action, which will be set to transition into stage five later this summer. Overall, the project is delayed by about three, four months or so, but we hope to make up most of that delay by wrapping up the project in December, only two months behind schedule. There's been a lot happening, as I know you've been receiving emails, and there's been an occasional staff report. But essentially, the program is coming along well. From a budget perspective, the program budget has risen, but along with the rise in the program budget has been a rise in co-funding from other partners, most recently the $20,000 from the province of Nova Scotia. The town's projected cost for the project right now is just shy of $60,000, which is still under budget compared to council's approved budget of $66,000 over two fiscal years. So that represents a fairly healthy influx of other project funds to support us along. And this chart does not account for the in-kind contribution to the project, which we are also measuring. And in order to talk to you about some of the community engagement aspects of the project, I'd like to introduce Craig Deedles. So Craig comes to us from Clean Foundation as our 15-week summer intern, and I'll turn things over to Craig now.
Okay, I've given myself four minutes, so we'll see how that goes.
Oh, I like you.
My name is Craig Deedles. I am a master's student from Dalhousie University, where I am studying community planning. My research there focuses on equity considerations for renewable energy projects. So in short, I want to answer the question, how can sustainable energy programs benefit the widest range of people? I came here after taking a course with Jessica McDonald, which introduced me to the progressive work that Bridgewater is doing and to the Energize Bridgewater program. I am now going to discuss some of the community engagement components of the Energize Bridgewater program, which include the Bridgewater Energy Partnership. So this encourages innovative energy solutions and increases collective energy knowledge among local businesses and organizations. So we are holding bimonthly workshops to learn about energy issues and how to address them in practical ways, helped along by energy experts. So far, we've been lucky to have guest presenters who specialize in solar energy along with energy poverty. We also consult with the energy partners on a regular basis for the Community Energy Investment Plan, or the CEIP. We also, today, as of today, there are now 10 businesses and nine organizations enrolled in the program. Nova Scotia Power just came on as a learner, a leader, and a program sponsor. So there's also the Living Energy Laboratory, which you heard a little bit about from Amanda. We introduced this to promote innovative energy projects in the community that demonstrate practical approaches to achieving a local energy economy. In February, a panel of judges welcomed 10 local projects, and the initiative awarded over $5,400 in cash and other resources to help them achieve their goals. The projects are planned and managed by individuals, businesses, and organizations, both for their own benefit and to offer a teaching tool for the whole community. And as you heard from Amanda, one of those recipients is the MTRI, and that went to fund their renewable energy monitoring system. So in order to collect feedback and information from local residents and businesses, Sustainability Solutions Group and their subcontractor have led five community consultation processes for us so far. The Energize Bridgewater team has more community consultation activities planned with specific stakeholders for the summer and early fall. That's one of the reasons that I'm here. This all includes tomorrow's community workshop on affordable energy and fighting energy poverty. This workshop is going to take place at the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Everyone in the public is welcome, and city councillors are heartily encouraged to attend. Our activities are going to culminate in the Energize Nova Scotia Discovery Fair on October 27th and 28th. We will be celebrating Bridgewater's energy vision, as well as providing a final opportunity for community members to give feedback on the draft Community Energy Investment Plan. We're proud to have Jeff Dawn as our keynote speaker. Jeff is a renowned battery technology researcher at Dalhousie, who is funded by Tesla, so Tesla is coming to Bridgewater. Along with this talk, the fair is going to feature education and technology stations, plus workshops for businesses and the public. We are also developing a school outreach program that will bring energy-themed information and fun activities to local schools in the week leading up to the event. A vendor and sponsorship information package for the fair is being presented to council this evening. So for more information about the Energize Bridgewater components, including those that I just mentioned, you can look at the Energize Bridgewater website. This also links to the active, or to our active Facebook and Twitter accounts. Now I am going to hand things back to Leon. Thank you for having me in your town.
Thank you, Craig. So what I'm going to wrap up with is just where the plan, the planning process and the community engagement process has gotten to so far. So we have done quite a range of outreach and engagement activities over the past year. I think that overall, our feeling is that with the people that we've engaged, I think that the vision of creating a local energy economy is something that has generally excited the community that we've, the community members that we've spoken to. In a very brief, like, kind of one slide, what we're doing is, is creating a new vision for our community, or our home, or our business, as one that's moving, which, what could move to a future where energy costs are higher and more money is leaving the community or leaving our home, if we do nothing to create a different kind of decision or a different kind of energy future, to one where we consciously intervene in, in energy issues and choose to invest in energy sustainability and thereby creating a local energy economy, where if we draw it to its ultimate conclusion, hopefully there's a situation created one day where energy is actually being exported from the community and money is entering the community. That's just one part of the equation, where the money is going, where the energy and the money is going. What we're also doing is we're defining a local energy economy as one where we meet far more of our local energy needs. I actually noted in the first presentation that happened tonight, that 58% of the St. Vincent de Paul's disbursements actually related entirely to energy issues, if you added up the electricity and the fuel, oil, and wood. So there's just one example where people are not able to meet their energy needs, but that outcome is one we want to shift, to one where people, especially our most vulnerable, are able to meet their needs, as well as create a thriving economy around that. So all of this is wrapped up in our emerging definition of what it means to be a local energy economy. And the, one of the best ways that we can measure that is by a tangible reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from the community. We've been working hard with our consultants, Sustainability Solutions Group, to map out alternate futures for Bridgewater. And they're producing graphs such as the one you can see here, where energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions from 2011 are gradually being driven down toward either the 66% reduction mark, which is the red line, or even the 80% GHG emission reduction mark, which is the gray line at the bottom, through conscious efforts and investments on the part of the town, local businesses, community members, et cetera. So this is one of the ways that we are describing what that energy transition looks like. And one thing that I'm particularly proud of is that SSG will be delivering to us a fully costed plan toward a low-carbon future. And there's a lot, there's a lot to the money behind that, and a strong business case for that investment is being developed. In order to move forward with practical solutions, SSG is investing its time and energy in our remaining community consultations to look at energy improvements in four key areas. One is upgrading buildings. Another one is deploying community-scale energy generation and distribution systems, changing transportation systems, and finally, changing land use, or having an influence in land use, so that land is used as efficiently as possible within the town of Bridgewater in line with the municipal planning strategy. I won't get into any more detail due to the briefness of this conversation. If you would like to learn more, come to our talk tomorrow evening at the LCLC at 6:30, where you can delve right into what it's going to take to move the community along in that respect. Staff's recommendation for council to mark this midway point in the planning process, planning and engagement process, is that Town Council endorse the general achievements and processes of the Energize Bridgewater Initiative, including the intended vision and solution areas of the Community Energy Investment Plan as described in the report that you have before you, and will use that as our foundation to move the plan through to fruition. One thing that I will just briefly add is that there's a number of stakeholder consultation sessions that are coming up this summer with some key segments of the community. And just when the ladies from the St. Vincent de Paul left, we've actually already just invited them to participate in those conversations, because we need people like them who are at the front line of serving energy needs in the community involved in this conversation. And we will involve council in some key conversations as well.
Okay, any questions to Mr. DeBreed? Leon, what other projects have we funded?
For the Living Energy Laboratory.
Yeah, like, give any other examples?
Sure. We have a nice website that lays out who the partners are.
Yeah.
So some examples of projects that are funded is, there is a person who is developing a children's storybook on the topic of local energy sustainability. We have a new business startup that we're providing some coaching and support to, and participation in some energy-related job training. There is a renewable energy monitoring system for Indian garden farms. Blue Nose Coastal Action Foundation has proposed creating an extensive energy improvement database for Bridgewater and area, so that we can see what kind of improvements have been done in the community, and we can learn from other people's experiences. This is MTRI's project. The town's own clean energy financing project for homes is part of the package. Mash-Up Lab, so Andrew Buttons' Mash-Up Lab program has recently done an energy addition. They received some project funds. There is a homeowner, David Maxwell, in, down the river a little ways, who's interested in promoting greenhouse technologies for, for local residents, so he's part of our initiative. The Le Havre River Credit Union is offering Eco-Green loans for home energy and vehicle upgrades, and we're promoting their program. And the Wayfinders program is a local program that's teaching young people to sail, with the intention of actually delivering locally sourced goods to Halifax using a low-carbon transportation method.
I'm really hoping that the one, second from the left at the top, the gentleman who presented that, it was fascinating. So it's a, it's a generator for a festival, like we can put it on King Street, fill it with batteries, and then it's, you set it up and it slowly recharges itself while you're using it. So that would, that'd be something that every community could use.
Yeah. And maybe I'll just add that the town's funding toward the project was around about 25 to 30% of the total funds that were dispersed. And right now, actually, one of Craig's roles with us this summer is to document the journeys of all of the projects, so that the whole community can learn from their experience. It's feeding into our overall process.
I have a question, maybe, maybe it's a tough question that is for another day. So we're trying to reduce energy consumption and make energy cheaper for people, recognizing that the utility is Nova Scotia Power. So how far can we go down this road before Nova Scotia Power, for lack of a better term, gets in the way and says, well, great that you can sell us this kind of power, but we're still charging the homeowners set number of dollars per kilowatt-hour? So how much control do we have over how much the cost of energy is in this community, without being the utility ourselves?
That is a great question. Honestly, I can only speculate. I mean, you know, this is a really big, this transition is so massive in scope that we actually can't really see any of the endpoints, other than being able to project a certain number of things into the future. What I do know is that Nova Scotia Power, who has just joined our energy partnership, has made all the right noises in terms of being interested in helping the community gain, you know, improve its renewable energy generation capacity, you know, reduce costs and consumption for businesses as well as homeowners. At the end of the day, there are large market forces at play here, including the Utility and Review Board, the province of Nova Scotia. What we do know is that the province is aware of our program and sees this as one that should be inspiring other communities to do exactly the same thing. We've, that's been a very consistent message from the province, from our contacts. So I guess at the end of the day, you know, we're being encouraged to go down this road, and I think we need to have some, some faith that there will be some other positive motion that will, that will synchronize with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? There's a motion in your package. Someone care to make that motion? Counsel for Jure.
That, make a motion that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff with respect to the general achievements and processes of the Energize Bridgewater Initiative, including the intended vision and solution areas of the Community Energy Investment Plan as presented in Document 17-091.
May I have a secondary, please? Counselor Thorburn, any further questions? Questions being called, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Energize Nova Scotia Sponsorship Framework. Mr. DeBreed.
So I'm going to keep this one fairly brief. Our, as is required by the town's corporate sponsorship, policy 85, corporate sponsorship and naming rights policy, the event that Craig described, the Energize Nova Scotia Discovery Fair, that's the culminating point for our program, requires the sponsorship by local businesses, organizations, and other sponsors in order to meet its financial goals. We have set up a sponsorship framework, which is presented to you in the staff report, consisting of four levels of sponsors, and then one special category for media sponsorship. The, I guess you could say, the perks that are being The, I guess you could say the, the perks that are being offered to the sponsors and the, the, the dollar values or the equivalent dollar values of sponsorship are being, are provided on that same sheet. It is our experience through running events like the Growing Green Festival that this is not terribly far outside of the range of how we've typically set up our sponsorship frameworks. But of course, we require council approval and endorsement of that, of, of basically those funding levels as per the policy. So it would be our recommendation that council approve the proposed Energize Nova Scotia Discovery Fair sponsorship levels so that we can go out and start claiming our sponsors and also our vendors and exhibitors for the event. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Does anyone have any questions about those sponsorship levels? Hearing none, someone prepared to make a motion?
I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and approve the proposed Energy Nova Scotia Discovery Fair sponsorship levels as presented in Document 17-090.
Do we have a second, or Deputy Mayor Tanner, any further discussion?
Good luck.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. De Reed.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is tender 17-03E, North Parkade Repairs. And Mr. Hopkins is here to give us the highlights.
Yes. The, the town's engineering department requested tenders for the North Parkade repairs. Repairs include spot repairs on the concrete deck as well as some asphalt repairs and waterproofing to the entrance and exit of the parkade. The finance department issued 13 tender packages and on May 30th received three back. Two of the tenders were within our budget and they were all qualified. The engineering department recommends that the tender be awarded to the lowest contractor, Eastern Infrastructure, Inc., for an amount of $57,470.10.
Okay. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor Tanner? I don't know who's going to answer this, we'll see. What was the total value that we placed in the budget for the North Parkade repairs overall?
Forty-five in capital.
And then 10 in operating.
I haven't checked that.
Forty-five and 10.
Right.
The one that's in the, in the parking one as well, you mean?
Yeah, I can check that.
Yeah, I have, I have it here. It's 45 and 10. 10 from Omenham.
Okay. I thought we had made a decision to also do railing repairs and...
Yeah.
So where does that?
It's a separate item.
Separate. And what's the value of that one?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty.
Another sixty.
Sixty-six.
Yep.
And that's not until the fall where we're going? Yeah. Perfect.
And you, Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, I don't know. I had mentioned to Larry before, but you're fixing a lot of little tiny spots and that's a nightmare to drive through without hitting the hole. And without something to keep that salt off that, you'll be back there the next year doing the same thing because salt does not react good with cement. And we talked to Larry about possibly putting a skim coat of asphalt over the top of it to protect it and preserve it. And it might give a longer lifespan. I don't know if he checked into that or not, I just wondered.
I'm not sure if he has. I know we get a review done by an engineer every five years and then make repairs due to his recommendations. But it's, it's a constant battle to keep that out.
Yeah, it is. We spent a bunch of money on it last year as well. And like I say, anyway.
I know they had a concern about the weight because I remember you, you raising that and they had a concern about the weight. But your point is very valid that, you know, you fill a hole of concrete and it pops out when the salt and water goes in it.
Anyway.
Councilman Gittes?
So please tell me that we're not going to have that look like it's looking right now again next year.
I hope not.
There's no way to prevent it though, is that what you asked?
It, it, it happens. I think with the old parkade, the, the one that's been demolished, it was, it was the same idea. Over time, it just keeps deteriorating, so we're constantly fixing it, so.
So we could potentially spend another $55,000 next?
Yes, you could.
What's the definition of doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result? Is there nothing we can do to let, is there some research that can be done or something to see if we can do something with it on a permanent?
Well, I mean, I mean, council can direct staff to, to do a report on what it would, what it would cost to change the, really, it's changing the surface, right? Because concrete just is not working. So the report would have to be, what would you top that parkade with? And if it's a weight issue, it means pulling all the concrete off and putting something else down.
I haven't been involved with, with all of it, but it's a, you know, it's been there for some time. It's aged concrete. So I'm, I'm, from day one, it wasn't being replaced all the time. It's, you know, it's getting to the point of the age where more of this happens. So I'm not sure if they looked at recapping it with, with something or finding other means to, to make a longer permanent solution to the problem.
I, I guess my concern is the work probably won't be complete till, what, August?
Could be.
My guess would be, or...
Weather pending.
Weather depending, maybe later, which we're not getting much use of for this year. And we're going to have to wind up doing it again next year.
Parkade's open all year, though.
Well, I realize it's open all year, but it's not, you know, half the year is not fit to drive on or walk on. However, I know someone that actually hurt their foot walking on it. They went in a hole. So, yeah, I'm, I'm supporting the motion, obviously, but I, I have a concern going forward.
I think we need to, I think we're, we all share the same concern that we don't want to throw good money after bad. So I think council will have to direct staff to come up with a more permanent or at least a long-term solution. But we're going to also have to find the money for that. But it has to be done. We can't do this every year.
No.
So, Councilman Fager?
Yeah. The Canada Day Committee was, we were down on King Street just looking at our possible areas for the vendors and we're using the parkade. So I, I was kind of shocked at some of the, how, how some of the areas are really deep potholes there. Some of the events will be set out there. So I was just concerned about some, having that on Canada Day. Also, with the winter maintenance, is it sand that is used in the, do you know, or versus salt?
I think we saw, but I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a product that would be more friendly for the concrete versus...
Just to add to that, up until now, the town hasn't been doing the winter maintenance. That's been contracted out through the arrangement with, that we used to have with Town Center and, and Scotia Business.
Okay.
So this coming winter will be the first winter that the town and town staff are, will be doing the clearing and salting and, and sanding. So there'll be a lot more control over what's put down versus how it was done in the past.
Okay.
And more, more ability to monitor that.
Okay. Any further questions?
Just, just one, one more obvious question. I know the answer to it, but I'd like to hear it publicly. We're not going to shut the whole parkade down. We're going to do half or whatever.
We're trying, try to do it similar as we have the other parkade. However, there will be a period of time since we're doing work to the entrance and the exit that the parkade will have to be closed.
Is what it is, I guess.
Yeah.
Someone prepared to put motion on the floor? Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award tenders 17-03E, North Parkade Repairs to Eastern Infrastructure Incorporated for a total price of $57,470.10, including HST at 15%, $52,115.89, including net HST.
Can I have a second, please? Councilor McDonald, any further debate?
Question.
Question's being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Do we need to formal motion, direct staff to look at long-term solutions?
Yeah.
Then I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to research possible long-term solutions to the North Parkade surface. Does that work?
Second by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further discussion? I think we kind of, we're all on the same page on that one?
Question.
All right, questions being called. All those in favor? There you go. So next week, what other? Yeah, it's only 20 after 7.
And they may already know what the solution is. I'm not sure. I'll layer this stuff.
Was it involved taking it down?
Well, I would, I would assume that to, to, that Councilor McDonald's motion would include a little bit more detail, including what the solution is and maybe the beginning of some numbers. So that as we work towards budget, we're not having this, this debate in February. We're having this discussed maybe in the fall. Is that where you were going?
Yeah, I was just going to comment because I've been asked a lot as to, you know, what's happening to the parkade. I think because there hasn't been any, you know, that it's in the condition it is, people think that we're, we are going to demolish it. So I, I think there needs to be a plan as to, you know, to, to maintain it and to see, see what costs are associated with that.
All right, thank you. Proposed fee policy. And I'm assuming that our strategic initiatives coordinator is going to lead us through Document 17-088?
Absolutely. Essentially, the fees policy captures what we are currently charging for fees. And the purpose of the policy is to, one, pull fees out of bylaws and centralize them in a policy format. And two, put in the writing fees that we have and that we're administering, which aren't really written down anywhere else other than our computerized systems. So the purpose would be just to pull the fees into the policy format so as council wants to review it, any given fee, one, everyone's aware of what the fee is. It's written down in a centralized location. Two, if you want to change it, it's a matter of a, a fee amendment, a policy amendment, which can happen at one council meeting as opposed to if it's in a bylaw, we need to go through a full bylaw process just to change the fee. So just to create some more flexibility and awareness around our fees. There's a notation in here, the understanding that staff will be looking at fees periodically to ensure that they're meeting council's needs, whether that's full or partial cost recovery or whatever philosophy council would like us to endorse in looking at the fees. And it's written to allow a lot of discretion in how that is to be undertaken. That would be, you know, up to council if they want to direct us periodically to do it, whenever it is that they want that done. But certainly staff are aware of what the fees are and can help council achieve whatever goals they would like us to achieve in terms of what our fee levels are.
Great. Any questions before we put a motion on? Councilor McDonald?
Just wanted to bring up fees such as parking fines, well, there is no parking fines, but insufficient funds and, and things like that. I've seen some information recently about how some of those kind of things can really hold people who are lower income, can hold them down from ever kind of getting out of things. Is there any consideration or is there any way to kind of address that, that sort of situation so that NSF fee doesn't cost someone $60 and that's their groceries? I know that's difficult because you have to determine who, who this is going to impact.
Yeah. And I'm not sure, fees may be more flexible because I know we've had this discussion around other, the, the deed transfer and so on. But something that we'd have to check out, I guess. I'm not really sure at this point. And then we would have to kind of figure out how we would determine who would be eligible to...
Yeah, it's a tough one, but a $25 fee can be a lot to someone.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
What are surcharges work for individuals?
Would you like to answer that with Mr. Hopkins? Or finance, I guess it's more of a finance administration.
It just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, the, if it's, if what we're talking about is when we do work for individuals, we put a surcharge on that cost. Sometimes we have contractors in town who are, come to the public works garage thinking it's a store as opposed to going in and, and, and some equipment or materials you can't easily buy in Bridgewater. So, and that we stock, so, so to...
Discourage?
Discourage is a good word. From people to do it on a regular basis. It's, you know, more of, for an emergency thing and, and we have a surcharge on that. So, but...
But it's a lot of people.
Yeah. As part of the budget process, did we direct staff to review cemetery charges? I thought we had a discussion about that, but was there clear direction given or not?
No, it was briefly mentioned, because I think it was mentioned two years ago. And I think I kind of brought it up and said council is interested. And then it kind of never went anywhere. But that's certainly we could get some correction.
Councilman Gittes?
I was always under the impression that there was no charge for the use of our fields. Apparently, there is. Is that new?
Parks and Rec is working through their field.
Well, there's a fee here of $18 per hour.
Yeah, the big volunteer pays.
Yeah.
That would be for adults.
For adults.
Adults pay a fee.
Well, there's no charge for youth. You have to pay.
So again, adult baseball league.
I do know that Parks and Rec are working through a, a policy and some fees, but we have to go through some consultation first. So that'll be cleaned up.
So it's okay to charge youth for ice, but it's not okay to charge them for the use of a field?
That's the exercise that Parks and Rec is going through.
They're going through that now, are they?
Yep.
And we can anticipate some sort of recommendations in the air before budget time?
Yes. Safe to say before budget time, yes.
Thank you.
Can I add one more comment?
Yeah.
Just, just to highlight that the parking meter fee is in there at the current rate, which is 50 cents per hour. So if, if that were to increase, we would do a fee amendment, a policy amendment for whatever increase it could be in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Councilor McDonald?
The parking fines are not in there because we haven't set up the mechanism to collect them yet. Is that why they're not?
Fines are generally different than a fee.
Okay, yeah.
Sometimes it's provincially set, there's a, but it's, it's different. We sometimes don't have complete control over what that total fine is. And those are laid out in a bylaw. And if we want to change the fine amounts, then we generally go through a bylaw process. The fee is purely administrative and it's purely in-house. So we have complete discretion and control over what...
Right, thank you.
To a politically acceptable standard, but over what that fee is.
Any further questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I move the town council of the town of Bridgewater approve the proposed fees policy as presented in Document 17-088 and that it be enacted as policy 89 for the town of Bridgewater.
Can I have a second, please? Councilor Thorburn, any further discussion?
Question.
Question's being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Our next item, oh, yes?
I'm just wondering if council wanted direct staff to look at the cemetery fees? Like I said, it was mentioned a couple of years ago. I mentioned it during budget. Is there any concern around that or...
I don't think we've really discussed. Would that, would that go through the cemetery? Yeah, Parks and Rec and the Cemetery Commission, would they?
They don't, there is no cemetery.
Not anymore?
It would be through Parks and Rec.
Well, this will add it to that agenda then. Well, if we're working on fees for, for other facilities, we'll add that on. Okay, thank you. Next item is Youth Engagement Advisory Committee. So we've revised terms of reference to include or to not limit youth members before they had to be in the town of Bridgewater, but recognizing that youths from outside the town spend most of their time in the town. It seemed like a natural fit to remove the wording in the town of Bridgewater. And also, now that we have the members listed below, we need to formally appoint those members through council to the committee. So if someone would like to make the first motion, that would be great. Councilor McDonald?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the mayor and amend the Youth Engagement Advisory Committee's terms of reference residency requirements as presented in Document 16-224A.
Have a second, please? Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion on that? Councilor Thorburn, did you raise your hand because you had a question or?
No, I thought 45.
All right. All those in favor? And would, Councilor McDonald, would you like to make the next motion as well, please?
Move that town council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Adam Strickland, Brady Meisner, is it Seal Billings?
I think so.
Okay. Emma Williams, Kelly Cunningham, Nikolai Wile and Nicole Blain to the Youth Engagement Advisory Committee effective immediately for a one-year term.
Can I have a second, please? Councilor Fager, any further discussion? They're meeting again tomorrow for another meeting, so they're, we're going to rein along. Questions being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. First reading of amended Chapter 189 bylaw respecting cost recovery, Glen Allen Extension. And Mrs. Kaiser?
Back in 2006, council passed the bylaw 189 respecting cost recovery for the Glen Allen Extension, basically to recover the costs of putting the extension to Glen Allen Drive down to Le Havre Street. So there are two charges in this bylaw. There's a perennial foot charge for the property that fronts on Glen Allen Drive. Drive, and then there's a backland charge, which is a per acre charge, for the, the property that doesn't abut Glen Allen Drive. And the bylaw allows for the payment to be deferred until a building permit is issued. And what we're finding is that the, the development is perhaps slower than we anticipated, so we still have a lot of the frontage and backland charges outstanding. And according to the bylaw, they accrue interest, and, and the interest is growing, and the argument is that it's making some of the properties less marketable than they might otherwise be. So we, we engaged Turner Drake to have a look at the bylaw and make some recommendations, and that report is attached. And so there were basically two recommendations. One was that we freeze the interest charges, so that we wouldn't be charging interest going forward. And the second is that we consider altering the cost recovery bylaw, make it a, a local improvement charge that's payable over a certain number of years, so that we can collect that. So the second recommendation obviously would require some study and consultation, but the interest charge seemed like a very simple thing, so we decided to move forward with it. And so the, the bylaw changes very little. There's just something added to the end that says the interest will accrue and continue until May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, and then it would stop.
Any questions on that? Someone want to make that motion, please?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the intent of the amendment to chapter one eighty-nine bylaw respecting cost recovery, Glen Allen Extension, as per document seventeen dash zero eight-two A, and proceed to second reading of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on July tenth, two thousand and seventeen, and authorize staff to public, to post all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Someone, Counsel Thorburn, seconds. Any further discussion? I think putting that road in was one of the smartest moves council had ever done, and I think the anticipation was it would just fill with houses, and obviously, it's taken a little bit longer, and this is at least the first step in the right direction to start to maybe spurs more development, development on that property. Any more discussion? Questions? Questions being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Business arising and unfinished business. Sidewalk Cafe bylaw, the clarification of section fourteen fifteen, which I believe is just a rewording of that? Is that where we separated the two, the two sections?
Yes, essentially, just separating the sections to bring clarity to the fact that the town engineer and traffic authority can approve a lesser requirement than one-point-eight meters for free passage pass, on the sidewalk, past the sidewalk cafe.
Perfect. Are there any questions on that? Everyone's, understands the, the change, not overly substantial. So that will come to its second and final reading at our next council meeting on twenty-sixth of June. Our next item is second and final reading, chapter twenty-four, public sewer bylaws for rates. Mrs. Kaiser?
So this amendment is just to increase the sewer rates approximately fifteen percent as per what was contemplated in the budget for seventeen eighteen, and move us closer to cost recovery on these, the operation of the sewage treatment plant and, and the associated infrastructure.
So close to cost recovery, but still not, not there?
Yeah, we, we haven't even looked at trying to work depreciation into it, so, you know, at, at some point, ideally, we would work in depreciation and, and use it to fund capital in much the same way that, that the PSC does with the water, water rates. But we're not quite there even without depreciation, but we're getting closer.
Good. Any questions? No?
Would you like to have a motion?
I'd like a motion, yes, please.
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amendment to the public sewers bylaw, chapter twenty-four rates as proposed in document seventeen dash zero seven-two, adopt as bylaw, and authorize staff to pub, publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please? Deputy Mayor Tanner, any further discussion? Counsel Thorburn?
I, I think that's probably the, the smartest thing we've done for our taxpayers. Now, what, three years ago, we've been gradually increasing, so it's cost recovery. I'm just hoping at some point soon we get to the top, because it's, it's quite an increase on your tax bill over three years, and we're probably still looking at another year or two, but we have to do it. We have no choice. It has to be sustainable, so, anyway.
That's good, thank you. Any further questions?
Still the best deal around.
It is, yeah. Questions being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Second and final reading, chapter twenty-seven. Lots of second and final readings. Building code bylaw. Just a quick update?
Sure. Just as a quick recap for council, staff administers the National Building Code Act and Regulations, as it's been adopted by the province of Nova Scotia. Municipalities have the authority to pass their own bylaws, which would allow us to provide our own standards for the municipalities, so long as they don't contradict or interfere in any way with the, with the national code. So essentially, the, the act, or the building code bylaw has been written, just to clarify how staff are administering that act. I think the, the old bylaw had been written in nineteen eighty-seven and had received a few updates, eight, nineteen eighty-seven, ninety-five, and ninety-six, so essentially was just at a date and it needed a refresh. And it also will, it now incorporates the swing pool bylaw, which used to be a standalone bylaw for the town. It's a very similar, similar bylaw, uses very similar definitions, so it will now be incorporated into the building code bylaw. We have not received any feedback from members of the public in relation to the first reading of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Fergier?
Motion?
Yes, please.
That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amendment to the building code bylaw, chapter thirty-seven, as proposed in document seventeen dash zero seven-six, adopt as bylaw, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please? Counsel McDonald, any further debate? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Second and final reading of chapter one hundred and fifteen, Housing and Building Standards to be Known as Minimum Standards bylaw.
The minimum standards bylaw, we, we did have a noted version from nineteen seventy-five, which was amended again in nineteen eighty-six. And essentially, the intention of the bylaw, it's quite common to have in towns and cities, it ensures that residential and commercial properties within the town are structurally sound and adequately maintained, and it just required an updating to, to meet our current expectations. We have not received any feedback from the public on this bylaw since the first reading.
Great. Any questions? No? Building inspectors right here, nobody, oh, easy. Someone prepared to make a motion, please? Counsel Thorburn?
Yes, I will. The Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amendment to the Minimum Standards bylaw, chapter one fifteen, as proposed in document seventeen dash zero seven-seven, adopt as a bylaw, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Have a second, please. Counsel McDonald, any further debate? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Our last item under business rising, unfinished business, parking in the downtown. I was away for the discussion session last week, but I heard it was super exciting and, and lots of questions. Mrs. McDonald, did you have anything to add before we begin?
Sure. I'll just, for the, the benefit of a, of a quick revisit, there were three, staff understood, three outstanding items remaining, so addressing the, the parking levy and how to provide for some sort of a credit for those properties who provide onsite parking, within the, the current parking levy scheme, while also providing for the, the ultimate removal of the parking levy. And then, in, addressing some of the enforcement issues, so how can Bridgewater ensure that outstanding fines are, are paid and recouped? And so how to achieve similar arrangement that Halifax has, as well as other communities like Truro and Liverpool, and now the Town of Lunenburg. And, and then also the, the funding costs associated with moving from the current system, which is the parking levy system, through to more of a user pay system, and the upgrades required to do that, and sort of the ongoing cost of that. So just quickly, we, we looked at, and we did an assessment of every property within the parking levy area to assess the current parking requirements if we were to apply the land use bylaw, and the amount of parking that those properties had, and then created a, a credit system to, to be able to provide some compensation for properties that did provide some or all of the parking needs if we were to apply the land use bylaw. And in doing so, we were able to provide a credit to approximately twenty-five of the properties along King Street, ranging from ten percent credit to fifty percent credit. And so we have a, a motion in the report in front of you in relation to that. Regarding the parking, the enforcement, our parking meter bylaw requires some amendments anyway, if we're to have more than just a meter for, to install pay and display stations and other technology. And it also requires that it has a, the fines associated with the, the parking violations registered with the province as a summary offense ticket. So staff are revising the bylaw and anticipate bringing forward a revised bylaw to you at, at your next meeting. And then there would need to be a summary offense ticket registered under the provincial summary offense ticket regulations, or summary offense regulations, rather. And that process, so once the bylaw is, is amended, then that process can take approximately three months. And then it just becomes an administrative process with the provincial court to set up that system. And then finally, even with, with looking at how to provide some form of, of credit system back to those that have parking, we also made some adjustments, adjustments in how certain elements of the overall parking budget were to be funded, as well as some adjustments to the requirements, to find a way to sort of balance that budget, so that this, this fiscal year could be the last year for the parking levy, and that all the required infrastructure changes could be undertaken in there. And so engineering has sort of cited where, we've looked into the pay stations, they're solar operated, so the, much easier to install, require five to six pay stations. There wouldn't be any new meters on King Street, as per council direction in January. And there's some, a little bit of meter repair maintenance that needs to take place as well, as well as signage. There was a comment made in the last time we talked about, about how to make, you know, King Street competitive, and what, what would make, you know, give it a competitive edge, and there's, there's thoughts around, you know, if there was no requirement to pay for parking, that gives it a competitive edge over the other commercial areas. But ultimately, I think some of that, that need for competitive edge comes from having a different look and feel and a different offering on King Street than the other three commercial areas. And that's part of what King Street does offer, and that's part of what having no parking requirements associated with the downtown development, which means that they don't have to provide onsite parking for all the parking needs. So if GOWs needed to provide onsite parking for the size of the store that is currently down on King Street, they would have to have forty-one parking spots. And that makes King Street start to look a lot more like La Havre Street, or up at Gateway Plaza, or along North Street. And part of what will make, you know, a vibrant, thriving downtown is, is having a downtown that looks and feels differently than the other shopping areas in King Street. And so the removal of the parking levy is essentially a, a tax cut for King Street. You know, it's going to take that, that additional, special area rate for parking, and, and take that off, and make it a bit more competitive compared to the other three park, the other three commercial areas. Sort of an incentive for some property owners to reinvest in their businesses, and to attract new businesses. And, and so just in the last, in this past few months, we have four new businesses who have set up or are setting up on King Street. We have three different properties that are, have applied and received conditional approval to the facade improvement program. And, and so part of, of what council had asked us to look at before in terms of how to address the parking levy and, and parking in the downtown is, is, you know, in removing that parking levy, it will hopefully provide some more incentive for downtown to, to reinvest and reinvent itself after the large investment that the town has just made in its downtown, which has transformed how people think about downtown, and, and how they feel when they're coming in and out. Certainly, that's what I hear from people who are saying what they like about what they've, you know, when they come into town now, as compared to, you know, two summers ago. So, just some of those other, other reasons.
Good. Questions? Debate, yes?
Two, two questions, Jessica. Do we need to, or maybe it's, I don't know who's for, but maybe, do we need to set, or make a motion to set the parking meter rate, or is that, we don't have to do that?
Right now, it's built in at fifty.
We've just done that.
It's fifty cents. It's built in at fifty cents right now.
But there's proposed a dollar, right?
Yeah, so there was, that would be within the new fees policy.
So? So we can do it at the next meeting?
Okay.
Or this one.
We had talked about a dollar versus fifty cents, and, okay.
Not this one. So, yeah, essentially, it would be a matter of amending the policy.
Okay. And question two, how do we classify financial institutions? What's the definition of a financial institution?
Let me just pull out my heady-dandy land use bylaw. Are you asking because of the Money Mart and Speeda Cash?
Yeah.
They, they have not been included in the parking levy as a financial institution. The definition is an establishment which provides financial services to the public, including but not limited to banks, trust companies, finance companies, mortgage companies, insurance companies, or investment companies, not cash money companies.
Not loans?
There are loans. They are loans, yeah.
I would put them under finance.
So I would have to check to see, I, I did not grant their, their development permit and their use, so I would have to check to see what that was done as. But in terms of the parking levy and how the, they are financed, but in terms of the parking levy and how that was applied, they were not captured as financial institution. So there's a discrepancy between how we define them in the land use bylaw and how the parking levy had been applied. They also rent their space.
Any more questions? Counsel Thorburn?
I don't know if it makes sense, or even if it's worth asking the question, but who pays a levy now? Is it the building owner?
Yes.
Or the store owner?
The building owner pays the levy.
How likely is it that money's going back to the people that's running the business?
Not.
That's what I'm concerned about. That's where it should be going. If the price went up, they'd be passing that down. But I'm not sure how we can get that money back to the business owner that's...
So saying if their, if their rent is set to include the levy this year, and we remove the levy?
Is the rent going to come down?
Is the rent going to go down?
There's no way we can guarantee that, but one would hope that it might come back through some leasehold improvements and things like that.
Okay, no.
Yeah.
We could certainly encourage it when we do our regular visits.
Yes, we do a walk.
About down King Street.
I just want to make sure that it got back to the people that we're trying to help. I guess that would mean the right.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I'm going to wait till there's a motion on the floor to talk about whether we should have paid parking or not.
Okay. Do you want to put the motion on the floor?
I'm going to vote against it, but let me see what I will.
Does someone want to make the motion, then?
Put it on the floor. I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the following rates for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, for special purpose parking tax for all commercial assessment in the entire historic downtown area of King Street, as identified on the amended map in appendix A of document sixteen dash one four nine B as follows. I, point eight-five-two per hundred dollars of the assessed value for all commercial property assessments, except for those occupied by financial institutions, and three thousand six hundred and seventy-two per hundred dollars of the assessed value for commercial property assessments for those occupied by financial institutions, with credits for onsite parking provided as follows. A, zero percent for the parking required by the land use bylaw, equalling zero percent credit. B, one to fifteen percent of the parking required by the, by the land use bylaw, ten percent credit. C, sixteen to thirty percent of the parking required by the land use bylaw, twenty percent credit. D, thirty-one to fifty percent of the parking required by the, by the land use bylaw, thirty percent credit. E, fifty-one to ninety-nine percent of the parking required by the land use bylaw, forty percent credit. And F, one hundred percent of the parking required by the land use bylaw equals fifty percent credit. percent credit. And I made a mistake in I, it should be zero comma.
In number two there, it's, it's three dollars and sixty-seven point two cents.
Right, yeah.
No, that's okay. Is there a second there? Commissioner Thorburn? Discussion?
I've been a supporter of the paid parking, and, and actually, I'll share a, a situation that came to, to my attention just this past weekend, where the downtown parking lot in Lunenburg, and I know this sets rates for, for a, a levy, however, just to share this, this, the downtown parking lot in Lunenburg is not owned by the town, it's owned by the museum. They decided to turn about fifty percent of their parking spaces into a beautiful mural with beautiful seating, it's really, really well used, but the town had no control over the fact that fifty percent of that parking disappeared. So, I'm, I'm a supporter of the paid parking levy, I'm a, sort of paid parking, and a supporter of the levy to help put that infrastructure in place, so I will be supporting the motion.
Does a second there have any comments to add?
Same as, as councillor, I, I will be supporting the motion. I think it's time to get rid of the levy. Unfortunately, it may not go back where it was intended to the business owners, but I will support.
I have a question, but I think I already know the answer. So, the new parking lot that's next to the new park?
Yes.
Yeah, there are going to be meters there?
There can be.
Okay. The reason I ask is because, just like we have everywhere else in town, we have a business owner using that as their employee parking lot. When I went to look at our beautiful new park the other day, there was nowhere to park, because it was staff parking.
Jessica, just, property ID, well, three, four, five on the map, which I believe is, is it East Linker? Who occupies that corner?
Sorry, just a sec. Which property?
The three, four, five, corner of Maple and King. We don't include them.
MTT, no, there's, they're not included.
They're outside the area. Because there's no coming, going tra, like, what's the logic in not extending?
Part of it is because there isn't, yeah, a lot of coming and going. They have some parking. And part of it is how it was and has been traditionally applied, the parking levy area. Yeah.
I now have two reasons to vote against this particular motion. One, Commissioner Tanner and Deputy Mayor just brought up with respect to the two financial institutions that are operating on King Street that should be included in this, and I would encourage us to look at that. Secondly, we are not the town of Lunenburg. The merchants on King Street are competing with the mall, which has free parking. Now, the, I'm fully aware that the merchants who operate or the mall are paying a common area charge or a levy. I can live with a levy. I cannot live with parking meters. It just, it just makes them non-competitive. And I've had, I don't know how many people who told me if you have meters, and this is not the merchants, these are people, they're not going to pay a buck to go downtown, stop and shop, and get the risk of having a ticket. They're just, just not going to do it. Unless not everyone, but it, it puts them in a disadvantage. So, I am not in favor of the meters. So, I will not be voting for them.
Any further questions? Debate, discussion? I see King Street changing. I see the revitalization that the previous council envisioned with the new park, and this council continues. I see it happening with new businesses. Down by the Farmer's Market, we have two across the street from each other that are opening soon. I see more traffic downtown, but I also remember that we used to have paid parking downtown. And I don't recall a huge uproar of people complaining when we had meters there before. And that was before we had all this extra reason to go downtown. So, I support it. I support this essentially because the next motion after is going to be that the levy be removed, because I don't think it's fair to keep having a levy year after year after year. But I think paid parking, we've heard from other communities that removed paid parking and said it was one of the biggest mistakes they made. So, it is something that we can revisit. If we go down this road, and three or four or five years down the road, we see that this is a mistake, then it can be changed. But I think now is the time to bring back the paid parking, and I don't think King Street would be any worse for wear. So, I will be supporting the motion.
Question?
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. There's another motion there, if someone would like to make that one?
I can bring it if you want.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorburn.
That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to amend Chapter two-hundred Comprehensive Parking bylaw in advance of a two thousand eighteen-nineteen text year and move reference to the parking levy.
Do we have a second there? Second by Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion?
Question?
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We have no items under new business, and so we have reached the end of our agenda. I have a motion to adjourn, please.
Choose your end.
All right, moved, seconded. Adjourned. Thank you.